All right, go ahead, Jeff. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a joint meeting of the school committee and the Board of Selectmen of Wareham. It is a little after six o'clock on January 18th. The discussion for tonight will be around a number of subjects. The first one on the agenda, I suspect, is transportation, but we will proceed from there as productively and as openly as possible. There will not be public participation for this meeting, which is scheduled to last for only about an hour. Following that meeting, there will be a public hearing on the budget for fiscal year 2013, which will have joint presentations, or multiple presentations, I should say, first by Dr. Rabinovich, the superintendent of schools, and then followed by the town administrator presenting the full fiscal year 2013 budget. At that point, we will open it up to a public hearing. So bear with us for the first hour, but you're welcome, obviously, to listen, and it is going home to the citizens at their homes. Mr. Chairman, I think you initiated this meeting. I appreciate that, and if you'd like to start, feel free.
Okay. This is pertaining to transportation. I thank Mrs. Begley about particular, I hope you will not come.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I don't really have all the particulars. I had a lot of questions, and I think that this is certainly a first step in working together with the school committee. On the agenda, I believe transportation was first. And I had heard through the grapevine that there were three previous transportation studies, and had asked the town administrator to obtain those three studies from the school department, and have yet to see them. I was just wondering if they are not available?
Certainly, they're available. I was totally unaware until you said this, that the requests have been made. Dr. Rabinovich, are you aware of any requests that have been made?
No, I have nothing in writing.
You have nothing in writing?
Asked him.
Well, then, I guess I'll take this opportunity to ask for those three studies. Can you tell me anecdotally, Dr. Rabinovich, how old these studies are? Like, when these occurred and by whom?
The first one, I believe, was done, I thought, ten years, but I really now believe it's closer to maybe fifteen years.
Oh, dear.
I believe when we had the carpenter bus issue from town, and I would have to look at the date on that to make sure. That's the new firm from New York that came in and did an analysis and wrote a very extensive report. I've seen that one, I know what that one is.
Just to be clear, if the study occurred as a result of the carpenter bus issue, I was on the finance committee at that time, that was less than fifteen years ago. It was in the early 2000s.
So, ten or twelve years ago?
Something like that, yes.
It was before I got into such an office. And then there was one done approximately five years later, Mr. Swett was on, he brought the calls.
I would say it was probably about 2005. It's probably more like seven years ago.
And those are the two that I am aware of.
Unless you're including the most recent effort?
The one that you did the financials on?
No, no, no. When you say study, do you mean bidding or an actual study by a third party?
Well, I was referring to a school committee meeting that I had watched, and said that there were three studies, there had already been three studies of the transportation department.
I think we're getting hung up on the term "study," I suspect.
Perhaps.
The, I am actually only aware of one, two, two times where, one study, which was done by a, it wasn't even a joint committee, there were multiple people from a variety committees done, around 2005. I don't recall an actual bid being taken at that time, but there might have been, and I don't recall that, it was about seven years ago. The one prior to that that Dr. Rabinovich refers to, I'm not aware of. The most recent situation involves both a bid, in which we actually put the services out to bid, but then I did a, and I wouldn't call it a study, I would call it a simple analysis, based on actual costs, estimated costs for this year, budgeted costs for next year, and I put those together, but the differences between what had been done prior to that and what I did was, I collected all the costs that are not normally associated with the budget. For example, retirement costs, healthcare retirement costs, I put in depreciation based on what I thought was a realistic level of capital spending that would be necessary to support it. So it was obviously far more inclusive, and the result was, it was, it demonstrated, it seemed to me, that the cost of running the transportation department is far more than simply the budget the town meeting folks see and approve as part of the non-net budget. Now, that was shared with a number of people, including your town administrator, and I hope you've got a copy. So, once again, I don't think we should get hung up on the term "study," but it has been analyzed in a variety of ways and bid on a number of occasions, and all of that information, I'd be happy to provide to you, and I'm sorry you haven't gotten it already.
Thank you very much. I guess my question is this, with the transportation analysis, you said it demonstrated that it costs far more to run, is that, did I hear you correctly?
Yes.
That it costs far more to run than was reflected in the budget?
That is correct.
So, does it, is it anywhere near the dollar amount that for, well, the last bid asked for fairly new buses?
Correct. What it demonstrated was, the lowest bid we got was 2.4 million. That was basically to provide morning and afternoon pickups. On top of that was going to be the athletic and field trip costs, so you could, some number, let's call it round it, just maybe $100,000 on top of that. So let's call it 2.5 round number. What the public sees is a number of about 1.3, 1.4 million that gets thrown into the budget as part of town meeting approval. On top of that, you have to throw the depreciation associated with purchasing new buses. Now, you, if you throw in $400,000, that, to me, is a realistic number based on a fleet that averages five years of age and has no bus older than 10. On top of that, you have to put in other expenses, such as in-kind expenses. Now, right now, that's absorbed as part of the school budget, but in fact, they're part of transportation, and so those were allocated. Then you have retirement benefits. Now, most people don't understand that the actual pension part is self-funded, but the healthcare care is not, so that was a piece. But on top of that, you also have to put in the revenue generated by the revolving fund. So when you include all of that, if you include a fleet averaging an age five years, no bus older than 10, the town contribution is about 1.8, 1.9 million, obviously significantly higher than what people see. If you throw in even more depreciation and assume that the buses are the same age as what was put in the bid of 2.4, now it rises to a little over two, a little over 2 million.
Can it be a consultation?
A little over 2 million.
Works for me.
So if you really want, in my opinion, an apples-to-apples comparison, you have privatization, 2.4 plus whatever it costs for field trips and athletic events, whereas the current spending is a little over 2 million, based upon the same kind of depreciation, meaning getting rid of buses after seven years, nothing more than three years old, that sort of thing. So, apples-to-apples, it still looks like it's about a 400,000 or 500,000 dollar saving associated with keeping it in, as a town department. Now, you might ask, why? And it turns out, with more investigation, that there are two big reasons. One is that private companies actually have a lot of full-time employees, and they are paying healthcare benefits for all those employees. The way we have operated for many years is to keep those, the vast majority of employees as part-time, just under the number of hours that would require us to pay them healthcare benefits. That saves a tremendous amount of money. The other thing that is, that is different is, when the, and we learned this relatively recently, is when they bid on a contract, they assume, rightly or wrongly, but as someone who used to buy a lot of healthcare facilities, I understand why they make this assumption, they assume that they're going to have the contract forever. And that makes the template, the analysis of their costs, very different than if they assumed those costs were all going to have to be absorbed in the first three years or five years. Does that make sense? I mean, if you, if you, if you're going to put out a whole lot of money, and then have to assume that you might lose the contract in three years, it means that you have to charge a lot of money for that capital expenditure. They don't do that. They actually assume that they're going to have the contract forever, and that allows them to be much more competitive, and that means they don't really care that much about the age of the fleet. The other thing we learned is that the, they assume, regardless of what we put in the specs, that they're going to be purchasing all new buses. What we were told is unless they happen to have lost a contract, and they don't lose many contracts, because the trend is towards privatization, they assume that they're going to buy new buses. If they happen to lose a contract, they'll take the fleet of buses from the place where they lost them and transfer them to the, to the new contract. But the vast majority of the time, they're assuming brand-new buses. So for all those reasons, and I didn't mean to throw a whole lot at you at once, but for all those reasons, it appears that the 400, let's be conservative, let's say about $400,000 difference between what it costs the town and what it, as a town department versus what it would cost if we privatized, is about the right number, about 400,000. Now, having said all that, I still think we need to address how we're going to pay for it, because the fact of the matter is, we have not truly been paying for the cost of providing transportation services to our children. We have been pushing it off for whatever reason, and I think now is time to say, we have to pay for it, because frankly, with a fleet that now has, what, 25 buses that are over 11 years old, it's, it's, it's time we stop putting good money into buses that shouldn't be invested in.
With that?
And I didn't mean to monopolize all that time.
I'm saying we have a call now, so I'll, Board of Selectmen meeting, we'll open the meeting for the Board of Selectmen, and...
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're gonna, so we have the three members, we have Mrs. Wizzlow, and Mrs. Begley, and myself here, at 6:17. And I don't think we need a clerk, do we, since we have it officially?
I believe that she's also in the line.
Right, I know he is. Okay, the meeting is officially open for the P O S.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. To ask a couple more questions, in your, I looked at your transportation analysis, and I didn't see, and I guess I'd never seen, the bid that went out, the most recent bid from the school department. Was, is there a variable for the fuel, or did you include that in your transportation analysis, and was that included in the, the bid component? Since that's a significant expense.
Yeah, go right ahead.
The fuel was not included in the bid, even though we pay for it currently, because if we provide the fuel, it's cheaper because of state and federal taxes.
I understand, Dr. Rabinovich, but was that included in the transportation analysis that you provided, Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Because I don't recall seeing that as a line item.
Other expenses, I think it was.
Maybe, perhaps.
It was definitely, it was definitely included in the analysis that you saw on the Excel spreadsheet, yes.
Okay, and then the labor component for the school bus bid, that was, that was, because as I said, I've never seen the school bus bid.
Yes, all of that was included. I mean, they needed drivers for the vehicles.
But I think, as, kind of as a spokesperson for many people, many of the constituents that I've spoken to, I think what I, what I'd like to see is, even if these bids went online, so that, or the bids, or the 15-year carpenter bus issue, or any of those things were online, so that all of us could kind of come from the same place. One of the reasons why I wanted another study committee, and I know that the school committee is, definitely wants action, and I don't blame you, but at the same time, having someone come in that, that isn't married to any idea, and is able to kind of, no matter how hard we try, we're gonna, we're gonna have our own agendas, or whatever, by virtue of our elected offices. But if we had some people come in to kind of look at this from a clean slate, I'm not married to the idea of outsourcing the buses, but I'm also not married to keeping it in-house. So I just think that absolutely something needs to be done. We have an aging fleet, they're, they're, the maintenance costs are going to increase. I get that. But I really would beseech the, the school committee to agree to have a study committee, and I'm saying not have a study committee and they report to us by September 15th. I'm saying have someone come in that, have the committee that we had proposed come in, have access to the information, and come before both of us, again, with, with their findings. And that's my personal opinion.
Ron.
I, we agree 100 percent. There has been, I think, several conversations that have happened within our own committees about what that committee might look like, or what, or a group coming in and discussing it. I think that a little bit of, at least my frustration, I won't speak for the rest, is that every single time something is proposed, we talk more about, we, there's a little bit of bickering about what the makeup is, instead of what the end result is going to be. There, there's been several proposals that have been thrown around, but then always when we start moving a little bit forward, there is whoever department it is, whoever committee it is, there's been something that kind of throws a monkey wrench in it. So, I have never been against someone studying, but I would want to understand what more needs to be studied, based on the information that's already out there, and I know that at any time, when I've ever asked for any piece of information from the transportation department or the superintendent, I have received that information and reviewed it. And so I, I definitely would like to, I would like to know what additional pieces of information would need to be studied, because then that would help me decide on, how long is that going to take? Because any study that takes longer than two months is too long without getting buses in-house right now. Like, like we said, there are 25 buses that are over 11 years old. I even thought that two months ago, three, 10 months ago, was too long to wait to buy new buses. And so, again, I want to, besides just talking about a study, I want to know what the end results, what, what are we trying, is it cost? Do we really want to know, is it cheaper to do it? Because everyone, I think, at this table agrees that the most important thing is the safety of our children. And I think that the work of that happens every single day, to ensure the safety of our children on the buses. So what I would want to understand, is it truly a cost analysis to decide on, is it less expensive to outsource or keep it in-house? Is, does it have to do with maintenance? Does it have to do, if it's just about, it has to be defined, I think, is the most important thing for me to do, and to support a committee at, at this point. Just because, again, and I'll just say this as many times as I can, we need buses yesterday, if we're going to continue to do it the way we are today. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, on my... I absolutely agree. However, I think that this would have to go, no matter what's decided, would have to go to town meeting, am I correct? So by, between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen, we could certainly have parameters that we would want to, to be looked at. How can we go to the voters at town meeting? I mean, this economy is very difficult for many, many people, and without having all the information in front of them, I think asking for hundreds of thousands of dollars without voters feeling fully informed is unfair. So that's what I'm asking, and that's my point for this committee. So having, if, if we're going to look at the whole thing, like the maintenance costs, the, the age of, you know, people have heard about the age of the fleet, people have heard about the state of disrepair, the expense, and it's extremely expensive, as anyone knows, to try to keep an aging vehicle on the road. However, it's still cheaper than necessarily purchasing new. And that's what we need to look at. We need to look at the absolute, absolutely, safety is number one, but if we have to ask these voters to either have a debt exclusion or an override, we, they, they absolutely deserve to have every piece of information they, that is available to them, to make an informed decision.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr., I think Mr. Andrews has.
Just real quick.
Sure.
I think one of the things, and thank you for your analysis, I did forward it to the Board of Selectmen, transportation has become a very complicated business, and I think the superintendent would agree with that. We'll be, many of us will be attending the Mass Municipal Association meeting coming up next couple of days, and I'm sure there's going to be a ton of information about that, but just getting some of the terms down, so that we understand where the fuel costs are, and particularly in the, in the analysis, non-district transportation, what is that? So that we understand that in some cases, we're picking up children outside of our community in other districts and transporting them to other schools and other school districts. So, I, I, I think, I agree with Ron, I think as many ways that we can get the terminology down, so that people understand what might be in the analysis, helps us all have the right terms at our fingertips, and hopefully the right tools in our, in our toolboxes. The other thing I just wanted to state, you know, I guess the discussion on Article One at the previous town meeting, if the governor had signed the, the additional local aid bill that came out, the latter part of that week, we would have funded parts of Article One, in my opinion, at least I would have recommended that. And I've talked with the superintendent about this, and to the board. The important part here is that you have to start somewhere. There are committees and groups that I've been working with, that say that we need a holistic plan, the big plan. You gotta start somewhere, because the aging buses, the 25 over 11 years, Barry, right? They're not going to get younger. So, in my humble opinion, we need to work hard for the upcoming town meeting to get something on the table. In the presentations that you're going to see, we distributed the local meals and hotel tax, there's $100,000 in the school budget as we speak, that could be part of the solution. I'm not saying it's the entire solution, but it's a recommended part of getting to some place, because, and I don't, I don't, I won't speak for Chairman Cruz, but, you know, you gotta start someplace, you have to have a starting point, and to get those numbers down, because at, at some level, no matter what study or analysis that you have, we're really at risk after 10, 11, 12 years. And I know that that, nobody at this table, as Ron just stated, wants to be in that position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fons?
I'm sort of on the side with Ron to, I just think that we have had studies, analysis, all of this done, and I guess the comment is, the public needs to know everything. I think they got a pretty good idea a year ago, or whatever, when it was breaking news that the buses, X amount of buses are failing. And we had inspection reports that everybody had access to, the buses were failing. That has not changed since that last time. So, I don't know what else can come out of further studies, whether we're getting college kids or anything is irrelevant to me. The bus situation, ever since I've been on the committee four years ago, has not changed. Every year, that's one of the issues, the buses are failing. Transportation director is practically holding buses together, but I guarantee, when the report comes out again, if X amount of buses failed inspection, people are going to scream, what's going on in transportation? The fleet is failing, but let's do another study, is to, do we really need to get the buses? That's my problem with it. I think the public knows by now that there's no other solution, we have to figure out how to do it. And, you know, whether, as Mr. Andrews, or whomever said, whether you're going to ask for debt exclusion or override, in this economy, it's tough to do, but also, public safety for our children has been the hot topic by everyone. Yet, let's keep doing more studies, and the fleet now is 11 years, one day, 11 years, two days, three months. When is it going to stop? We've had bids out there, I do believe Mr. Andrews, on the town side, also put out a, an RFP, am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you had information from that, we had information from the RFP from the school side. So, all due respect, I, I don't see what the benefit is of any other studies, other than the public knows the buses are failing, a lot of them are in deplorable condition, and they need to be replaced yesterday. I don't know what else I can add to it, other than it's just frustration right now, Mr. Andrews, and, and not saying on the town side, but for everyone, Selectmen, school committee, FinCom, we all want to go out and buy 20 new buses, whether we buy them or lease them, but a study is, I don't know what more information you're going to get out of that.
Eric.
I think Carol, I'm trying to go back and forth, unless...
Okay, I just, I kind of wanted to fight Ken for what's at it.
Is that okay?
All due respect.
Okay.
I think we can do both. Yes, Mark, I think had, you know, what he's alluded to, I believe, is that, you know, if we can fund, you know, the lease of a seven, to get us at least something on the road, so if we have something that breaks down, we can take it off the road. And at the same time, we form whatever group we're going to form, we give them all the information, so that we're not studying to wait to do something. We do something and we study at the same time. And, yes, because of the committees that you've been on, and because you've heard it at the school board, and have bid to transportation, you may have a level of comfort that some other people don't. We have nothing to hide, we will put everything open, and like I said, when, when that bid went out, Mark did get a copy of it, so, you know, we try to make things available. And I have said it before, and I'll say it again, drop by anytime and ask for something, I will get it for you. I don't watch Tuesday night, and to see what people ask for. And, you know, if the phone rings a red light, says, I don't pay any attention to it. So, that's where I...
Mrs. Wizzlow?
Oh, sorry, Jeff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Karen?
Yes?
Do you have a statement? Can I get to it, Karen?
Oh.
That would be a shame.
Yeah.
Drop, drop, shake, on if you want. He's got the good stuff.
I just want to say that I, I echo the frustration that we can't seem to move beyond the point of having a discussion, and I'm hoping that whatever we decide tonight is movement in a direction, because we had the same conversation at the same meeting a full year ago, and nothing has occurred. We have gotten to the point where we've stagnated ourselves, and if something is that important to Mrs. Begley, then I think it's a reasonable compromise to put together a study committee, and that's why I supported the idea. Because I, I think that what this boils down to is that the people that are sitting around this table have to really recognize that the issues that we bring forth and our concerns are all valid. We can't argue the validity of it. We have to figure out how we can work with them and get something accomplished. And time is of the essence. We don't have any more time to have this discussion. We've got to move the discussion in a direction, and I want to see that happen.
Mr. Chairman?
I probably shouldn't speak, because I have been very, very critical of the transportation situation since, since the beginning. It kind of surfaced under my chairmanship. I think that there is a perception out there that the school committee is being disingenuous about providing information... about providing information and in the best interest of student safety. I don't really care if we run our own fleet, if we subcontract it out, I don't care. If you, if you feel that subcontracting it out is, is the cheapest, then we'll subcontract it out. I do care about student safety. I do care that it, it's been publicized, politicized, and, and we're not, we're not any further along than we were before, when we had this meeting, and I agree with Ms. Winslow. So, I am convinced, as a, as just one person on the School Committee, and a citizen, and a taxpayer, that it can't be done cheap and we're doing it. We, we are doing it for the cheapest price. I am convinced that over the twenty-some-odd years that we've had the transportation under our jurisdiction, that we have probably saved the town in excess of eight million dollars. That's eight million dollars that have gone into general side government. So, I'm convinced that it's the cheapest way to go. But right now, it doesn't matter what I'm convinced on, another study, we're going to study it again. We put the whole thing out to bid last year. The whole thing went out to bid last year. And now I know there was some that say, well, there wasn't apples and apples, and there wasn't oranges and oranges. We've had consultants study it. Some people say, well, we don't agree with the consultant. Well, you may not agree with the consultant, but the fact is that there were some very, very concrete facts brought out about our transportation system. So, no, I'm not in favor of, of any studies, but if, if that's what it's going to take to ensure student safety, then I guess that's what it takes. But it's, it's not about, it's not about anything more for me right now than getting these buses and getting these kids on buses that are not ten years old, that are not constantly being repaired. And, so, I, I, I'm, I'm sick of the debate, to be quite honest with you. I'm sick of the debate. It's become, it's, it's become political debate that really has no foundation, as far as I'm concerned. But I'll play the game. If we have to have another study, we'll have another study. But in my opinion, as a taxpayer and a citizen, we need to buy the buses, and we need to buy them now.
No, one second, I'm going to respond, please.
Do you have anything, Rachel?
What?
Okay, I'd like to make a comment on this. Time is not on our side right now. We need to do something soon as we can. There's a proposal by Barry, and I hope the town administrator probably can help us out, because since he's doing the budget. If we can afford to go with something like now, and then still do the study. The study can come back, because time is in the essence, so we need to do something like, if we had to do it tomorrow, next week, or next month, instead of two, two months from now. By the time you get the committee together, by the time they meet, set the ground rules, we're wasting time. Now, if we, if the budget is on our side, we get together with the School Committee, it was mentioned one point five, or whatever it was, if we can afford it, and Mr. Andrews will have to come back on that, let's go with something now. Do the study, come back with the study, then we can make another decision if we have to. But something needs to be done ASAP. Mr. Swett?
I find myself in agreement with virtually everything that has been said, which is not always the case, but let me add the following. I hear also a lot of frustration, for a variety of reasons. I think that the committee that has been, I think unofficially proposed, maybe officially, makes a lot of sense, but I believe only if the scope and the mandate of that committee is broadened. If the scope of the committee is simply do another study of, of transportation in, in-town versus privatization, then nobody's going to have any hair left, you know, in a few months, because we're all going to be that much more frustrated. But, but...
Hold on, hold on.
But if, but if the scope is broadened to say, okay, we want to not only answer that question fully, and we want to develop a consensus on that question, so that when we go to town meeting, everybody hears the leadership of this town saying, yes, this is the direction we need to go, rather than wondering which way they should be pulled. But if at the same time, this committee has a mandate to say, okay, once we've decided that, how are we going to pay for it? What is the best way to finance the cost of providing transportation to our children? I would even suggest that if we have these good people in a room, given the fact that time is of the essence, not only with transportation, but if you'll allow me, Mr. Chairman, it's of the essence of capital spending in general, because I know capital planning has a list a mile long of the things that they need to be, of the things that need to be done. And I know we need a roof on the, on the high school, so that we don't have to push basketball games over to the middle school. So, there are a lot of capital needs that we have been putting off for a variety of reasons. And then finally, I think we're going to hear, see, we're going to hear and see two very significant presentations shortly. And then what it's going to tell us is our two CEOs, our two chief executives, have needs to fulfill the services that our town and our taxpayers expect. And the revenue to provide those services doesn't exist. Now, I don't know what the right answer is, but it seems to me if this committee was also asked to decide whether a contingent budget was the right way to go, and we could all get behind that or not get behind it. If the consensus on that issue, I think that would be extremely helpful going into the April Town Meeting. So, I, Mr. Chairman, I am happy to participate in a committee that you envisioned, and I'd just like to make the agenda and the mandate of that committee as broad as possible, and that we get started as soon as possible, so that, so that the frustration of talking and not doing is, is eliminated from, from this group.
Now, on that committee, we have a suggestion, I think we did, about who was to be on that committee?
We had a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
You know, I, I find myself in agreement with, again, as, as did you, Jeff, with many of what was said. But I think that these, the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen can certainly come up with an agenda and a mandate that would go to, go to this, this particular group. I, the, the frustration that I feel, like, Dr. Sylvia, I had no idea that, that you perceived that there was a savings of perhaps eight million dollars, because I don't have that information.
That's just, that's just my rough arithmetic.
Right, but that's what I'm saying is...
Over the time that we've had the buses.
But not being a part of that, I would have no way of knowing that. So, that's what I want everyone in town to have the same knowledge base, to be able to make an informed decision. Because, as you said, there are, we've got a, a Christmas wish list for capital items. And definitely using the wrong term, because most of these things are very crucial items, infrastructure that we need. And number one is school buses, no question in my mind. And I'm not married to the idea of privatization, or if we keep them. I really don't care, as long as the buses are safe, and they're the most, it's the most economical way to transport our kids, and that people in this town feel the same way, because I don't have that expectation that people are going to vote for something just because I said it or you said it. They want the bottom line. They don't make those kinds of budget decisions in their homes, and I don't expect them to make those kinds of budget decisions for their town. These are their tax dollars. So, I find myself in agreement with much of what was said.
Excuse me, I thought you said you had a motion to make, if you want a motion.
No, that wasn't what we had.
Just one thing that I meant, I, I don't know if I made it clear, but I, I just want for the record, if there is a record.
There's a record, there is, the TV camera.
I am absolutely convinced, I'm on the School, well, actually, I guess I'm the senior member on the School Committee right now. I am convinced that running our own fleet is the most economical way to go. There, there is absolutely no doubt in my mind about that. So, there's no ambiguity in my mind about that. That's number one. And number two is, keep this in mind, ladies and gentlemen, if we privatize our bus fleet, we can't do what we've been doing for years. We can't kick the problem down the road. That bill's going to be paid every year. We've been kicking this problem down the road for many years. If we privatize, that bill's going to be paid, and it's going to be paid every year.
Mr. Chairman.
I just have, I'm sorry, I just had...
I was, I was trying to go back and forth, unless that's not sacred. Okay, go ahead.
No, I, I think a, a piece of information that would be helpful to the entire committee, I know that, that the analysis, the cost analysis that was done, the most recent cost analysis that was done, was shared with everyone. But I'm not sure if this would be helpful, because we talk a lot about it, and about what that analysis includes and doesn't include, and we're, we're closer to the transportation system, but can we put together a narrative of the, of some of the line items in the analysis that you did, in the cost analysis, so then, some of the questions that might come up on, where is fuel, where is healthcare, all of those questions can be answered in each one of those items, and I think that would be helpful as we're, to finally, to answer that question, finally, what, what is the gap between privatization and keeping it in-house? And again, everyone's going to be able to tweak it a little bit here, a little bit there, but I think that if you do have the full picture of everything that it includes, and if we're missing something, that'll give you an opportunity to say, hey, wait a minute, maybe you didn't think about this. And that could be a dialogue back and forth, but if we can have that shared with not only these two boards, but also on the website, I think that would be huge. And let me just say again, that we are, we have studied this, and, but of course, not, and you can study it fifteen different ways. So, I would just ask, anyone that has the piece of information, again, not to look at and nickel and dime about, well, he did this, or he did that. Again, if you see a cost savings of four to five hundred thousand dollars, boom, let us know how we can, how we can redo that cost analysis. But really, to just take a look at that and say, okay, now we have a pretty good picture of what the difference is between keeping it in-house and privatization. Thank you.
Karen?
I think that the idea of a committee that can make payment recommendations, as well as other recommendations, is a good idea, because, you know, I don't see the solution to this as being privatizing or keeping it in-house, leasing or buying. It may be that the solution is a little bit of everything. It may be that we outsource some of those smaller out-of-district routes that may be cheaper to, and I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying...
We make money on them.
We make money on them, but I'm using it as an example, that we keep the main routes that are within Wareham, within our own garage here, that we lease three buses a year and buy outright two, so that we're not constantly adding on to a larger number every year in lease payments. I, I mean, I think that with some real creative thinking, and people who are willing to sit at the table and look at it from the perspective of, it may not be one answer, it may be a whole bunch of other answers, put together in a creative solution. I think it can get done. And I also want to say that, from my perspective, if Mr. Andrews can show us where the money is going to come from, I do think we need to address this at Springtown meeting. Because absent that, we're into the fall, by then, we're, we've rolled the buses again, and I, I don't think we can do that. I, I really don't. I don't think I'd, I don't think myself as a person would feel comfortable putting this off another six months.
Just, just real...
Yeah, I just want to add to, add to it, I, I think Jeff hit it right on the head when he said, maybe we're using the word "study," and there's more to it. But I, I like to see a plan that, you know, I'm comfortable with a plan that has milestones that says, we're going to buy X amount of buses now, and in 2013, we're going to do this, this, this. And if you're having a group of people, like an action group, not a study, not a study, if you're having an action type of committee, let's try to keep it to a reasonable size, because the larger the committee, the larger the headache. And, and my suggestion to you, Mr. Chairman, is that if this committee was put together, I would envision the superintendent, the town administrator, the chairman of the School Committee, chairman of the Selectmen, and the chairman of FinCom, those are the, those are five key players there. I, I don't see any benefit in a eleven-member group, because I've been part of those committees, and, and it's just not going to work. But we have to have a plan that's going to say, we're going to do something right now, and these are the milestones on other things that we're going to do down the road. Don't tell me you're going to buy five buses now, and then this goes away for five more years, because the problem's going to keep resurfacing.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, just to echo what, what Kenny said, and Selectman Winslow indicated, you know, we've got to get out of the fog here. We've been talking about this, you can go into minutes from committees that have been studying this for a decade plus. And there are a lot of people out there that want it to rain, and I'm going to say that the people around this table can stop the rain. We need to get that plan together. We've got a hundred thousand already put aside in the proposed budget, that budget's going to change, because we don't know the local aid figures, we don't know those Chapter Seventy numbers yet, we'll get those shortly. And we need to put an action plan, and I'd call it fast-track action plan, because it doesn't make any sense to keep talking about this, we need to get that plan on the table, and get some action with the purchasing process. And I think Kara hit it on the head, and Ellen spoke about it earlier, Selectman Begley talked about it earlier, that it, it could be a combination of items. But you know what? The town, this fiscal staff that I have, we've studied this until we're all blue in the face. Mr. Sullivan doesn't want to hear another item about this, okay? And as far as I'm concerned, the major players that are going to get this done, as Kenny said, are on this table. And if we commit ourselves to this, I know we can get it done, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, I apologize for being late, but some of us have a real job that's out of town today.
Oh, come on.
Usually I'm in town, but not today. You know, I, my whole theory on this is, and I've been of the opinion several times, that, you know, we have actually done this, not with buses, but with other things. And people like, I'll mention some, because I happen to know them, people like Tremblay Bus, Churchill Bus, and these types of folks, right? They're professionals at this. And, and I don't know that we've actually had them come in and do an apples-to-apples comparison. I think last year, we talked about a full menu, to give us an assessment, right? Mark put something up on the website, and, and this committee is fine. I just want to get something done, that's the big thing, is to get it done. But I'm wondering if, if that group would consider having somebody come in from a consultant, like from Tremblay, or Churchill, or some of these others? Because you know, when we, I worked at South Coast, as you know, when we went to close our laundry down, right? It was a big decision, we always did it in-house. And, you know, we were told that, oh, the price was going to go sky-high, you wouldn't be able to afford it down the road, you'd lose control over it. And really, today, none of that, none of that ever came true. You know, we tore the building down, and they outsourced the laundry, it's a finite number, a fixed number every year, there are some incidentals involved, it makes it easier to budget, if that might be the case, it's a fixed number, right? And so, but I'd like to, I'd feel real comfortable if that was explored, and maybe it has been, and I just haven't seen it and read it. But I think that that should be part of the mixture, is to look and see what that cost really is. And then we're not worried about five years from now having to buy six buses or three buses. Those big expenses all at once, if you can level it out over the course of time, and make it fit to what you're doing today, because I heard the comment, that, you know, we make money at it now, right? Is that true? Did I just hear that?
On certain routes...
Certain routes.
Revolving fund actually generates a surplus, that's what I mean, that's what I mean.
Right, because we do the rentals, and we rent those buses out, right?
We pick up other children who are going in the same place.
Right, what about over the summer? Isn't there a program where people can rent the, I've rented a bus before.
We have for community things, yes.
Right, we have that, right? And so, you know, we, that, but I'd like to see all that worked in, and see what that bottom number is, because you know what? If it costs a little bit more every year to do that, we don't, you don't have all these highs and lows with big expenses of having to buy buses or lease buses. So, I would just like to see if that committee's formed, to make sure that that's part of the mix. But I, but I do, and I also agree that there should be a timeline on that activity of the group, so that it's, it's done within a certain amount of time.
Rachel, do you want to make a comment?
I did want to make a comment. I actually would like to see us go to the next step at this point. But I also would like to add that I can't forget the local impact of losing our buses. Let's not forget how many local people who live and work in this community, who are on our busing. on our busing, who are on our transportation, that would possibly lose their jobs if we contract out. I mean, I think there's also a local impact we have to look at. So the study or the action plan also has to look at the impact locally to families. And, you know, I don't want to forget that. But at the same time, we've talked and talked and talked. Now, let's, let's go. Let's, let's do something now. Let's sit down and make this action committee, if this is what we're going to do, let's do that right now at this point. We've been doing these opinions for quite some time and it's time to move forward.
I think that's what I.
Run them briefly.
Go ahead.
You okay?
You all right?
Sounds like we're ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Right, I was going to say, Mr. Begley, you did have a motion and I think Kenny alluded on.
It was my motion.
Okay, would you like to repeat the motion for Michelle?
On the committee?
Nice and loud, please.
Not really. I. No. I, I made the original motion and if memory serves me, the original motion consisted of two members of the school committee, two members of the board of selectmen, the school superintendent, the town administrator, two members of the finance committee, and two, no? Oh, sorry. One, I'm sorry, the chairman, one capital planning committee member and one finance committee member, thank you, Mrs. Begley. But, and three at-large members. No, those weren't part of the initial, were those part of the initial? However, I, I am, I've heard from a number of people tonight that that type of large group may not fly with everybody that's sitting around the table. So I guess my, my question would be, you know, where can we compromise on this and get this put together and get this done?
Question?
So, that's not a motion, that's just a.
I'm just restating the motion that we made for the.
This was when it was going to be a study committee with the use of interns, Mr. Fons. Right now, we want an action committee, so I understand what you're saying. But I do believe because we had had the superintendent and the town administrator as non-voting members of the committee, and I always still encourage that. And in order to bring it down to something reasonable, I move that we have an action committee that consists of one capital planning member from and by that committee, one FinCom member from and by that committee, two members of the school committee and two members of the board of selectmen, and one citizen at large.
Sounds, was that a motion?
Yes, that was a motion.
That's a motion, you have a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Motion's second.
Any discussion?
Too big.
Seven people.
Seven.
Hold on. No, I just got to have a motion for each, I need the motion for our committee.
Okay, I'll make the same motion, could I, I'll make the same motion on, no, I can't, I'm the chair, sorry. Would anybody make the motion on behalf of the school committee for discussion?
I'll make a motion that an action committee be formed that includes one member of capital planning, one cap, one member of the FinCom, two members of school committee, two members of board of selectmen, and one citizen at large.
Could I have a second for discussion, please?
Second for discussion only.
I appreciate that, Mr. Fons. Okay, discussion.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, for our records, I will second Mrs. Begley's motion for discussion.
Okay. Who would like to make a comment on the motion?
I would. So if we're talking, I understand Mrs. Begley's point, but the two most important players in the, on the committee, the town administrator and the superintendent, to say that they are non-voting members, they're just there to provide information. I don't agree with that. I think if you have an action committee, as I stated, of five members, you can go out and, and talk to any subgroups that you want, but that action committee is going to be five members and the vote could be 3, 2, 4, 1, 5, 0, you do the math. But to have the town administrator and superintendent, the two CEOs of our so-called company as non-voting, I don't see, I don't see the point of having that. I think if you have this action committee, five members, they can meet with capital planning, they can meet with FinCom, you'll have the FinCom chairman on that board. But when you start getting out seven, nine members, working out schedules to meet together, I can't support that. I mean, I want something done, I agree with it, but I think when you get past five and not include the superintendent and the town administrator, there's, there's no benefit to that. Thank you.
To respond?
Please.
I understand that your, your concerns about this may be too great a number of people, Mr. Fons. But I think my point being that I want these to be open public meetings. I want minutes taken. That has been an issue right along with me because I think that intentions are good and there are a lot of small meetings going on. But I want to have that information available to me and I want it available to everyone that, that requests it. So I would certainly agree to withdraw my motion, only if this smaller committee would be conducted in public and have minutes.
So just, just to be clear, and I appreciate that, that compromise, you were amending the motion to cut it down. Mr. Fons, you were amending the motion to reduce the number of people to what?
Well, it was an amendment, it was discussion.
Okay.
But if, if you want an amendment, then I would say my amendment would be my original, which is the superintendent of schools, the town administrator, the chairman of the board of selectmen, and the chairman of the school committee, and the chairman of FinCom. And, and then if you want, and then if you want to have someone from the school side and someone from the town side keeping minutes, that's fine. I agree with that. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that. I'd just like to see the size of the committee smaller so work can get done.
Okay. Would you accept a friendly amendment to make it or designate with respect to the chairman?
I will, as long as the town administrator and the superintendent are part of that. Pick anybody you want from the school committee and or selectmen, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Kara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I apologize, but before we get into making amendments, I just wanted to point out that two things from my perspective. I do agree with Mr. Fons that bringing the committee to a smaller size would be beneficial. However, I think that if we're going to remove either the FinCom or the capital planning, and no offense to FinCom, I like them all, but capital planning is really the person that needs to sit at that table because they're the most familiar with the long-term plan for the community. So if we're, if we're looking to bring it down to five, which, and if I hear you correctly, it would be a voting town administrator, a voting superintendent, one designee of the board of selectmen, one designee of the school committee, and one designee of the capital planning committee?
No, FinCom, he said.
Well, he said FinCom, but then I, I'm saying capital planning because I think that.
So I would accept that as an amendment to the amendment, to the amendment.
No amendments to amendments.
Right. So, Mr. Chair, would you like me to withdraw that and?
Okay, we'll have to redraw her first.
He doesn't have a second, though.
No, no, we have to, we have to redraw her first.
But can I, can I also make one suggestion to this group, and I apologize, Mr. Holmes, my back is to you. I, I would like to see Mr. Andrews through Mr. Chairs and Mr. Rabinevich, if we can work with WCTV and get these meetings taped so that they can either be aired or put up on the internet. And I think that that will really take a lot of the mystery and the cloak of darkness and the potential evil-doing conspiracy away. Because anybody, myself included, can go online or watch it whenever it's broadcast on TV. And I think we need that in this situation, in this discussion. And I hope that the rest of the committee will support that.
Keep it moving up in progress. Do we have you withdraw your motion?
She has to withdraw, look to our second first. I withdraw my second and withdraw my motion.
Okay. Mr. Fons?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the, this action committee can.
You guys have to withdraw your sides. Rhonda has to.
Rhonda?
I withdraw my second. Sorry, I withdraw my motion, withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
We have to vote on the motion now.
Okay. I have to make a motion, right?
Yeah.
Ladies before gentlemen.
And then.
She loves to make motions.
Go ahead, go ahead, Kara.
I do.
Winslow comes before Fons.
I make a motion that we create an action committee for the purposes, later to be defined outside this motion, of consisting of the town administrator, superintendent, one designee of the board of selectmen, one designee of the school committee, one designee of the capital planning committee, to be all voting members of said action committee.
Great.
As a public body.
That's, that's it. Okay, we got to do this.
First.
Second.
Second.
Ellen? That's what I said, you have as a public body, right?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Did you vote?
We don't, we don't, we don't have a motion and.
I'll go do it now.
Okay, but before you.
School committee.
Okay, before you make your motion, Ken, I have to, I have concern about leaving the FinCom off. Because given that we're talking about ongoing expenses, capital, capital spending, debt exclusion should be for one-time expenses or at least something that can be depreciated over many, many years. So if we're talking about ongoing expenses, whether it's police cruisers or buses or whatever, it's really an operating budget expense when you come right down to it, especially if the plan, and we all want a plan, is going to be for these, for the spending to occur every year. Therefore, it really comes down to a matter that the FinCom should care about, and therefore it comes down to the issue of a contingent budget. And if we're going to go in that direction, and I realize we may or may not, but if we're going to go in that direction or at least consider it, I think it's important that the FinCom be a party to it. That would only be adding one person, and I think it would be well, well worthwhile to have that individual present.
They already made their motion, we got to come here.
So.
They already voted that.
They already voted that motion. So I was asking the school committee to, to make the exact same motion with the addition of the FinCom, one FinCom member. And by the way, whether it adds up to an even number or an odd number, I think it's almost irrelevant for the following reason. If we don't get consensus across the board on this issue, it's meaningless. No, no close vote is going to, is going to produce anything that's helpful at the town meeting. There's got to be consensus.
All right, Mr. Sweater, all due respect, I kind of agree, but I think if we add one member and then the board of selectmen are going to have to revote and they're going to add one member, we're going to be going round and round. These meetings are going to be public meetings.
Yes.
So the five-member action committee can have public participation and someone from FinCom, capital planning, a school committee member, parents, anybody can come up and speak. I just think that already we're going against what we're trying to accomplish. So I'm going to make my motion that we have an action committee consisting of the town administrator, the superintendent of schools, one member from the school committee, one member from the board of selectmen, and one member from capital planning, and that the meetings are open to the public. That would be my motion.
I believe you meant to say or designate.
Or designate.
With respect to all those positions.
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We're all here, 5, 0, 0. Okay. I think we have passed.
Well, first, I didn't hear a vote.
No, I, I missed it.
Did you have a vote? I'm sorry.
No, Mr. Holmes.
Oh, I was.
He can't, he can't hear from this side.
Yeah, I missed it. I was writing this down. I was just going to make a comment, if it's okay to make that comment. You know, any of this really needs to go before town meeting. And the finance committee sits front and center on that stage, and I, I think a member should be included. I really, I really do believe that. Because you're going to have the board of selectmen who agree with it, the school committee agrees with it, capital planning, but people look to the finance committee for advice and guidance. And if the finance committee's left out of the discussion till the end, I mean, why don't we have somebody on there to represent them?
That's my only comment. I have a support of finance.
Mr. Chair, I, I hear Mr. Fons and I hear Mr. Sweater and I hear Mr. Holmes and I hear Mrs. Begley. Would it be agreeable to have a FinCom member sit in advisory-only capacity at the meetings?
As long as they're not insulted by that.
And I'm not, and I'm not trying to insult anybody either. I mean, I just, I think we're all sitting here trying really hard to meet the needs that are important to each of us. And come up with something that we can go forward with tomorrow. And I think there's been a great deal of compromise here tonight, so.
I agree. And since we have a consensus, even though Mr. Holmes and I agree with each other on this matter, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to go forward as is. We'll pull the FinCom in and make them feel a part of this process. So I'm, I think we should just move on. The public deserves this hearing to start.
Motion was made.
Yes, you need a vote.
Voting members of the action committee shall consist of the town administrator, the superintendent, one designee of the board of selectmen, one designee of the school committee, and one designee of the capital planning committee.
Second by? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, 4, 0, 0.
Can you add your vote in?
Yes. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So I will.
Second? We are adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, dear patients, everybody. We will start the hearing shortly.